Okay, I think we're about ready and I think it's right at six o'clock, so let me call the meeting door. Call her off.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
Gorman is present.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise as I say the prayer and pledge today. Our dearest and most precious heavenly Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet here tonight as free men and free women. Please bless our employees, eight hundred and fifty strong, as they have a very difficult job, a very hard job, and a very dangerous job to protect and serve us. Thank you for all the many wonderful things you've given our city. Bless us that we have the knowledge to make good decisions for our city. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go, only showing one communication, I'm gonna actually add some to that, but officially...
There was a number two added after the agenda.
Okay, what was it?
It is a letter from Ms., an email from Ms. Joyce Brewer regarding the recycling price rise, which a council member should have a copy at their station.
Okay, alright, do I have a motion to accept? Anybody want to pull any one?
Number one.
You're gonna pull number one, okay. Well, let's just take them individually. Read number one, you want it by title?
Just by title, and I'd like Mr. Carter just to kind of give us a brief overview.
Jason Carter, Attorney at Law Memorandum Regarding Risk Management Committee Quarterly Report, Quarter Two, Fiscal Year Eighteen.
Alright, counsel?
Good evening, Mayor, Member City Council. The, this is a Risk Management Committee report from the second quarter of this year. It narrates our transactions that we entered into, which are power purchases. We made for a total of approximately one point seven million dollars that purchased about sixty thousand megawatt hours for both the summer of twenty eighteen and the summer of nineteen. I'd say the only real noticeable transactions that we had during the second quarter was there was a lot of financial transmission rights activity going into the different auctions that are held by MISO. And as you can see, kind of totals out on the third page of the report, we actually generated revenue for the city of a total of twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars through FTR transactions. So, we were able to both manage risk and produce revenue out of that, which I think is always the goal that we'd like to have. In addition, I'd say at the bottom of my report, it doesn't note any recommendations for changes, but you should expect some recommendations forthcoming from the Risk Management Committee. I'd say in the past few months, you know, the committee's done a lot of thought about the processes and the rhythm of our meetings and how we can best take advantage of minor fluctuations in the market. Danny Bradley did a lot of analysis on that. Scott Springer's been working with his staff to increase communication with our power manager, and I think that we've got some really good ideas that are gonna help us take advantage of even small fluctuations in the market in the coming future, and you should expect those changes next month. So, subject to your questions, that would be my summary.
On the motion.
Do we have a motion?
Maybe to accept and file.
Second.
Thank you. On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Communication number two, how about a motion to accept and file?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just passed out a letter from me to all of y'all that I'm really excited about, didn't get a chance to get in communication. I'm gonna ask Caitlin to read the entire letter.
Honorable members of the North Little Rock City Council, almost a month ago, I reviewed a letter from Mr. George Aya, Director of the Region Six Economic Development and Administration Office, stating that our grant for public infrastructure improvements to accommodate and facilitate the job expansion associated with the first Orion corporate headquarters, the six hundred main building, and future Argenta developments had been approved by his office. I wanted to make a public announcement at that upcoming council meeting. However, Todd Larson, our Development Director, advised me to wait until we heard what the Washington DC office also approved it. Last Thursday, we received notification that our grant request for eight hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars was approved by the Washington office. It will pay for half of the more than one point seven million dollar public improvements, including construction and extension of Sixth Street and sidewalks, with sidewalks and drainage, installation of water and sewer lines, as well as streetlights, the construction of more than one hundred public parking spaces in the city owned, on the city-owned land at the northeast corner of the new Sixth Street and Magnolia. I want to thank Todd, who had the idea to apply for this grant, for leading the team that worked on this grant application, including Chris Wilburn, City Engineer, Amy Smith, Assistant Director for Procurement, Robert Birch, Special Assistant to the Mayor, Rodney Larson, and Conia Spencer, our friends in Central Arkansas Planning and Development District, and our private sector partners, Thomas Ponwall of Thomas Engineering, and Alan New of Taggart Architects. Also, the team received guidance and assistance from Mr. Aya's people at EDA, who helped us meet the tight timetables for approving, for getting approval before the end of the federal fiscal year on September thirtieth. Congratulations to all, best regards, Mayor Joe Smith.
Moving, accept and file.
Second.
The, before we vote on that, I just want to make a few comments, that this was a team effort, no doubt led by Todd, and Todd, you did a great job of putting this together and helping us to achieve this. This is a huge, this is huge. It's almost nine hundred thousand dollars that we're not gonna have to spend out of our money now to create this corridor on Sixth Street. So, you know, this is the reason that we invest in economic development and economic development executives, so that we can go after and find these things that on our normal day-to-days, we wouldn't know. So, Todd, good job, thank you. Robert, Chris, Amy's at home. Amy worked many hours and weekends, I think, to get this thing all put together, so she's a doll, no doubt. So, anyway, I want to say thank you to everybody, and we're gonna take that money and make a really special place down there. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
The, I've got another one, I'm not gonna go into it, I'm gonna read the whole thing, but we take form, pass it that way. We had, you know, of course, we had really bad weather all weekend, and we had some power outages, and so Scott put together a few little notes so that we'll know, in case y'all get asked, that Friday evening, we had a power outage in Dixie, and believe it or not, it was caused by a flock of seventy to eighty birds that flew through some of our circuits down there and took that out. Saturday morning, at four twenty in the morning, we lost a main line jumper feed, which was in the Indian Hills area. None of these were out for a long time, but even if it's more than ten minutes, it's not happy. Sunday morning, you know, which affected downtown, was a raccoon, which is the second time a raccoon's gotten into that substation. We don't know why, but we're gonna try to stop that from happening again. But we were able to get up, I know I talked to Brother Paul, and we got them all in time for him to have church service on Sunday morning. So, I wanted everybody to know that these were isolated incidents. We don't like them when they happen, but, you know, if it didn't rain, and wind didn't blow, and there wasn't animals running around, we would never have a power outage. But Scott and his people were on top of it, and we got most everybody up fairly quickly. So, thank you, Scott. I wanted everybody to be able to know that in case you got a phone call. And I also passed out an interesting article, and I certainly won't read it, it's about eight or ten pages long, on the conflict of interest and what's killing recycling. I found it very interesting, it answered some of our questions that we've had, so that'll be for your casual reading. So, with that, that'll take care of all those. Okay, I think we're gonna go into presentations now, and I'm gonna ask our Fire Marshal, Chief Flaster, to come up, and we've got a really special opportunity here. Chief?
This is Mr. Deronda Bryant, and I'll go ahead and read what I wrote here. On September third, two thousand eighteen, at nine forty-nine PM, North Little Rock Fire and Rescue Units responded to a structure fire at twenty-two oh six Village Drive. Upon arrival, fire units reported that the mobile home was heavily involved with fire. Proud to the fire department's arrival, Deronda Bryant, who was visiting relatives near the scene, saw smoke in the area and went to investigate. As he approached the mobile home, he saw smoke and flames coming from the front door. A majority of the mobile home was heavily involved in fire. He then heard faint calls for help. He observed the victim lying in the doorway, badly burned. Despite the intense heat and smoke, and risking great harm to himself, Mr. Bryant pulled the victim from the structure, dragging him to a safe distance. Mr. Bryant then instructed bystanders to call nine-one-one as he tended to the victim. Mr. Bryant's actions before the arrival of first responders demonstrate his heroism, a selfless act to save the life of another human being. For this reason, the City of North Little Rock would like to recognize Mr. Bryant for his bravery and thank him for his lifesaving efforts. I also have a challenge coin, a department challenge coin, that I like to present. Deronda?
It's certainly my pleasure, too, Mr. Bryant, to give you this certificate of appreciation from the city and from my office, and your bravery that you did on September the third. So, congratulations so much. We need more people in our world just like you. Thank you very much. Let's get a picture real quick. Okay, um, let's go into, I think we have some people signed up to talk about legislation. We have three. Delin Hearn wants to talk about eighteen one eighty-six. Delin?
Yeah.
There you are. Three minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Delin Hearn, I live in Park Hill, and thank you for letting me speak to this issue. It's the recycling issue. The last time I showed up to speak to the City Council, it was to encourage instituting a program for curbside recycling. It's important to me. My key word tonight is effective. I want what we do to be effective. North Little Rock had enthusiastic participation when the curbside recycling program got started. People were shocked by the number of people that participated and who wanted to be involved and wanted to do it right. We're told now that there's a contamination problem, is what I'm finding out. I think that's due to lack of education, because so many people wanted to do it and do it right. I don't think that we've had that big a change in population of people who wanted to do recycling in North Little Rock. Just a little side note, I hope waste management is not calling it contamination when the price has gone down on something and they just don't want to recycle it. But, I think if the education is effective, then there wouldn't be the contamination problem. I've got in my hand the last mail I received at my house. I put it on my refrigerator, because I wanted to do recycling correctly. It is addressed to my husband, who died two and a half years ago. His name was never on the title to my house and never on any of the utilities, so I don't know why they addressed it to him. But at any rate, there's sixteen bulleted items on here, and I think I marked down that three say what items should go in that bin. They don't give any details like what number of plastic can go in there or anything like that. Online, I spent about fifteen minutes down at Argenta Library before I came to this meeting, and I Googled "how to recycle in North Little Rock." I got nothing. There was no list of what could be put, I think that would be important to know, in how to recycle in North Little Rock. It suggested going to North Little Rock Recycling Program. It got me a link to the city, that got me a link to the regional recycling, and I did finally get a list. It was three to four clicks in, and if you've looked at anything about marketing online, you know, two or three clicks is the maximum before people are gonna give up. If, when I searched "waste management," which is the name on my recycling bin, it seems obvious to me that's where I would go for information, I got nothing. When I finally got recycling guidelines, they ended up being for Phoenix, Arizona. That's not effective. I looked up, and I'm sure somebody will correct me, but I think there's about twenty-six thousand five hundred households in North Little Rock. Not all of those have curbside recycling, some of them are apartments, but let's go with that number. It looks to me like those residents want a list. They want a list, that's what I'm seeing, that's what I'm hearing. That's not hard, that's not expensive. Just because you spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on what you call education, doesn't mean it's effective. People want something they can refer back to on a list. I have a list for my business. It didn't cost me that much, it cost me a hundred and seventy-five dollars for four thousand copies, front and back. And that's without a bulk discount like this. So, I think waste management is not being effective in their education. The contract is for recycling. If they're not recycling, why are we paying them? They haven't completed their reports. We don't know what or how much is getting recycled. We don't know if it's effective. What I'm going to suggest, and by the way, they're saying if it's contaminated, it gets dumped in the landfill, well, we're paying for recycling, and that's more expensive than dumping it in the landfill that they own. So, my suggestion would be, if they get the contract, you know, being cheap doesn't mean they're doing the job. If they get the contract, let's put some penalties in there for not completing those reports. Let's put some penalties in there for not doing a certain percentage of the available materials, and put some rewards in there if they make higher than their goals. That's the way contracts have always worked, as far as I know. If we want them to do what we've hired them to do, let's make it worth their while to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bull Mohammed, I see what you're gonna talk about, and we'll have a public hearing especially for that property, so you'll be able to come up at that point in time, right before we call that legislation, okay? Alright, next is Joyce Williams.
Good evening, I'm Joyce Williams, I live in Ward Four, Mr. Height, Mr. Witcher's Ward, and I talked to Mr. Height a week or two ago about the recycling. My issue is, I don't mind paying to recycle, but if we're constantly being told that we're not doing it right, and they're throwing it all in the dump, and we're also paying for that, I don't see where the benefit to curbside recycling is. Before, we went to curbside recycling, there were bins in various parking lots, and we did it for free, as far as I know. I know those places sometimes got messy, but to me, we're doing waste management's work for them, and then we're being told that we're not doing it good enough, and we're gonna raise the price, and they're gonna raise the prices to us. So, I don't know what the alternative is, but I kind of think that maybe we need to look at that. What's the cost of North Little Rock, and what benefit are we getting out of it? If it's more expensive to recycle than it is to put all this stuff into the dump, I know that's not green, but I think in the future, they could raise the prices year after, I mean, I know this is a seven-year contract, is it? But they could raise the prices year after year, you know, or contract after contract, and we wouldn't solve anything. So, I think it kind of needs to be looked at, what the cost benefit is of recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments on legislation, so let's go right on into legislation.
R eighteen one eighty-four, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment as surplus, providing for auction there for, thereof.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen one eighty-five, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution accepting a FEMA grant for one hundred eighty thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars under the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to fund and purchase physicals and cancer screenings for firefighters, automated external defibrillators, cardiac monitors, and respirator fit testing equipment, appropriating the city's local share from Act eight hundred thirty-three funds.
Move.
We've got a motion and a second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R eighteen one eighty-six, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving the proposal of Waste Management of Arkansas Incorporated to renew contract for residential recycling, curbside pickup services, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement between the Regional Recycling and Waste Reduction District, City of North Little Rock, City of Little Rock, City of Sherwood, and Waste Management of Arkansas Incorporated for residential recycling, curbside pickup services.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna have an amendment, and, but let me monologue just for a little bit. As y'all all know, I've spent hours, if not days, working and negotiating on contracts and trying to become the most knowledgeable recycler in the world, and some of the comments that we heard earlier, they were all, we talked about everything that each one of you said, so we have hashed and rehashed on what we've done wrong in the past seven years and what we can do right. You know, at the last council meeting, I was leaning towards ending that contract, and then I really got down and got to dealing with the numbers and trying to make sense of the numbers. And when I did, you know, waste management is recycling a tremendous amount of our waste. Sure, thirty-one percent of it is contaminated and is going to the landfill, but that other sixty-seven percent is a very, very large number. The total amount, and these are all estimates, because I took a month and put it all together to come up with my yearly numbers, but they're actually picking up and diverting two thousand tons away from our landfill that we're using. And two-thirds of that is actually being recycled, which, you know, is, it's two hundred, if we didn't do this, it would be two hundred of our garbage trucks, full, compressed, of twenty-two thousand pounds, which is about a year and a half worth, I mean, a month and a half worth of garbage that would, we would have to, that saves us from going into our landfill. So, these numbers are awfully large, and when you start looking at that, and then I said, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do, I don't know, we're gonna do double stream, dual stream like Fayetteville's got, and I've spent hours on the phone with their mayor in Fayetteville, and found out just how hard it is, just how expensive it is, and we could never do what they're doing up there for the amount that waste management's gonna do, single stream. Plus, the really big kicker on that was, that single stream creates three times as much recycling as dual stream does. So, if we were gonna do a dual stream program and it did five hundred tons, single stream's gonna generate fifteen hundred tons. So, when you start looking at all those numbers, and then I'm comparing new contracts for reci-, curbside recycling across the country, and the four dollars and fourteen cents that waste management has made with us in this contract extension is by far lower than anything I've seen. So, with that, I think that I'm very confident in saying that we do have problems that we need to fix. We're gonna try to get better on our contamination. We're gonna use some of those, the monies that waste management's gonna give us back, and we've talked amongst ourselves, all the mayors have talked about how we're gonna make it better, how we're gonna stop the contamination. And the reason that we want to stop the contamination now is to save money in the future. You know, if we can lower that contamination number, then in two years, when it's time to renegotiate again, that number might even go down, if we have better numbers. So, I was prepared to sponsor this legislation and ask that you approve this two-year extension. So, comments, questions, and amendment. Ms. Ross?
No, just on the amendment.
Okay, go ahead, state your amendment.
This amendment is, I have an objection to voting on anything, but I haven't seen the contract. I haven't read the contract, and that's what this amendment does. It says that the contract will come back to us when it's written, because, I mean, we're basically voting on suggestions, we're not voting on an actual contract.
Right.
And I've got, you know, I've got the original contract from two thousand and fourteen, and I just went through and highlighted a few things that we haven't followed through on, and I want to make sure to see if these things are in there, do we need to put some teeth in there if these are not followed? You know, in the original, it refers five times to waste management tagging bins. You know, that's not been done. There's, I mean, there's just numerous things that were never followed.
I mean, if you'll notice, in the highlights, you know, I mean, we highlighted what's gonna, the big things that are gonna change, and one of them is the tagging of bins. All they're gonna do is they're gonna help us with our problematic areas.
Right.
And we have three neighborhoods that are awful, and everybody else is fine. And so, we're gonna concentrate on those three neighborhoods. You know, we're gonna get five thousand dollars a month, or up to, I can take, you know, give me five thousand dollars every three months, and I can fix a lot of that in those neighborhoods. And so, we've talked about different ideas on things we're gonna do. You know, it's easier and more effective for them, by the time that they start tagging everything, you know, they can, they can much cheaper scrape the contamination to the side and take it to the landfill. And I understand that, it makes sense to me, I understand that. And so, what we're doing by trying to educate our customers is making sure that the future of the cost of recycling stays the same or goes down.
And, I mean, I'm a huge recycler, I am all for recycling, I'm, you know, I don't want to throw anything away, and I've heard from numerous people, and it's, you know, it's probably fifty-fifty that want to keep it, that don't use it, want it to go away. And I know that we've got to find something, but my objection is not seeing the actual contract. I don't want to put my name on something.
That's fine, I don't mind doing that.
And that's what this amendment is, is that it won't be approved until it comes back to the City Council.
Yeah, I mean, I think the main thing that I want all of you to be aware of when you vote, is that these highlighted items about the cost, you know, because we're gonna have to start working, those are the most important thing, of course, is the cost, the force majeure language in the contract, which I had no problems with, and taking out plastic bags and glass. So, beware of those, because those aren't gonna change in the contract,
Since we aren't gonna be recycling glass, so now we'll put our glass in the garbage. So is that gonna be additional money for the landfill?
Sure. Certainly will. We pay by the pound at the landfill, so it's gonna add to our poundage. All right, we got a motion to amend, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes, move for adoption, it's amended.
Second.
On the motion, Ross.
No.
White.
No.
Taylor.
No.
Robinson.
Hold on just a second. What did we vote on?
I mean, the resolution.
You're, we're voting on the resolution.
As amended.
As amended, and you voted no?
Mm-hmm, no, no.
And you voted no, Ms. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor, you voted no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Robinson. Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
The vote is tied.
Mayor votes yes.
Okay. It passes.
Thank you very much. On to the next one.
R eighteen one eighty-seven, Mayor Smith.
Okay, hold on a minute, let me get my stacks set aside here. Counselor, will you do me a favor?
I will.
I've asked this once before and I'd like for you to do a little bit more research on it. On these condemnations, you know, we've got two or three pages of them today.
Yes.
Twelve. I really think that we could have one public hearing and list all of these addresses at one time in a public hearing and keep us from calling twelve different public hearings. Please research that for me.
I will do that, Mayor.
All right, let's call one eighty-seven.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at forty-six oh four Adkins Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for the property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anybody here to speak on forty-six oh four Adkins? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one eighty-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at forty-nine oh four Haywood Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for the property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anybody here to speak on forty-nine oh four Haywood? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one eighty-nine, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at thirty-three twenty-four Burks Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for the property owner to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anybody here to speak on thirty-three twenty-four Burks? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and the city council member. I am absolutely confused on this particular situation. About in the month of June, the court inspector came in and put a notice and asked me that the property needs to be, needs to be fixed. So the property is owned by my daughter, she lives in Washington State. I went to the particular permit office and requested them about the permit to, so I can, we can build and finish the remodeling on that structure. They asked me to get a power of attorney from my daughter because I was not listed as the owner of the property. So I got the power of attorney. When I got the power of attorney, they issued me a permit and gave me twelve months to go and to finish whatever needs to be done to the property. The property is old. Before we bought the property, it was considered as a historical monument or something like that. So that was the reason that my daughter bought that. And at the same time, I was given a ticket by the court inspector there. I went down to the office and they asked me, and I told them that I managed that particular property, what is the problem? They said that we have, we need, something needs to be done to that property. And I said, of course, let me know, whatever needs to be done, I will be able to, I will communicate to with my daughter and we will take care of it. Unfortunately, instead of doing that, they asked me that they're gonna give a ticket and then we will take care of, and you need to go ahead and take care of it. That ticket became, Mr. Mayor, became a big problem and issue for me. I have never been badly embarrassed and treated so badly in the court the way the judge did because the way that things were probably presented to him and looked like that I was probably the worst or the bad person in this whole world. I have lived, we have a business place, I'm a respected man, I'm sixty-eight years old. Not only that I full, take care of my business, when financially there was issues and problem, I went down and applied and got a job. And when they gave me this ticket, I was telling them that I have just recently got a job with the Little Rock School Bus District. I'm only take care of that property I don't own. And they would not listen about that situation. I was still had to go to the court and take time off from that particular place. And then the judge tells me to finish that property in three months. Now, city tells me to finish it in one year, the judge says in three or four months, if you don't do it, I'm gonna charge five hundred dollars a day. Then at the same time, if I try to explain that I now have a power of attorney, that place does not, belongs to me, I mean, I'm not the owner of that property, but the only way I could do something was to have the power of attorney from my daughter first. So I'm so confused, Mayor, do I need to listen what the city says that I need to do in that twelve months? Or I listen to the judge who says it needs to be done within three months? I don't know.
Well, I mean, this is a public comment section, I certainly don't wanna get into question and answer right now. You know, our code enforcement director's here, be more than happy to talk to you. But bottom line is, there's a tremendous amount of these houses that we condemn. I've seen your house, it's awful.
I agree.
I've seen, and it's been that way for a long time. So I feel certain and I hope that the city council will vote tonight to condemn it. And then at that point in time, we have a process. And if you and your daughter wanna go through that process, we will certainly hold that condemnation. You have to come into our legal department and work out a program with them and you'll have to put up a bond that you are going to fix that house and you will have six months, I believe, to do that. So there's a process through this, all this whole thing. So what we'll do tonight is we'll vote if we condemn it. Then you need to go to our city attorney's office, okay? And sit down with them and they will work out the particulars with you and tell you how much your bond has to be. And you'll put up a bond and if you do not do what you say you're going to, then you will forfeit that bond. And we'll use that bond to tear the building down. So that's the procedure, okay? And, you know, our director is here, if you wanna catch him or if you wanna wait until tomorrow and go to legal, you're more than welcome to do either one.
I'll do it as soon as possible, Mr. Mayor, because I need, I mean, I personally believe also there's properties needs to be, should be taken care of. But there is a legal procedure, Mr. Mayor, that they did not send me any notice at all, knowing that I have the power of attorney, that they should send me some documentation to at least talk about. I will do whatever it needs to be done.
I would be, I would be willing to bet that they did the rules the right way, because we do it too many times.
I can bet you, Mr. Mayor, I don't come here to argue, but I can show you.
Okay, get with legal, get with legal tomorrow. And if we've done something wrong, we'll certainly fix it.
I appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet. Ms. Ross?
I just wanna remind Mohammed that it has thirty days to get, is it that correct, on the rehab? So within thirty days, you need to get with legal. If this does pass, to do the rehab agreement, if you want to do the rehab agreement.
Yeah, I'd start tomorrow if I was you. Because, you know, even though you have thirty days, you're gonna have to be visiting with someone in Seattle, Washington, wherever your daughter lives.
And I visited with Mr. Butte before the meeting and told him to get in contact with me and I would go over the procedure that he needs to do in order to get a rehab agreement for this property.
Okay, thank you. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at nineteen oh one East Washington Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for the property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, nineteen oh one East Washington, anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety-one, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at four hundred East Twenty-first Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on four hundred East Twenty-first Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety-two, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at fourteen oh four West Short Seventeenth Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, fourteen oh four West Short Seventeenth, anyone here? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety-three, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at nine twenty-one Rose Clair Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anybody here to speak on nine twenty-one Rose Clair Drive? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety-four, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at thirty-eight oh five Freeman Circle in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on thirty-eight oh five Freeman Circle? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety-five, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at eleven oh six East Second Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on eleven oh six East Second? Eleven oh six East Second, seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at twenty-one oh five White Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, twenty-one oh five White Drive, anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R eighteen one ninety-seven, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Anyone here, call a public hearing, speak on grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Oh eighteen seventy-five, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, declaring an emergency.
Move for, move for, waive all readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, declaring an emergency.
Move for, move for all readings. Second. Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1876, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the 2008 quoted ordinance, ordinance number 8980, for the North Little Rock District Court, First Division, Electric, and Legal Departments, declaring emergency. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1876, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the 2008 quoted ordinance, ordinance number 8980, for the North Little Rock District Court, First Division, Electric, and Legal Departments, declaring emergency. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Oh, second.
Sorry, I was trying to read ahead.
On the motion. On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1877, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of sections 12.15 and 15.14 of the zoning ordinance to allow the development of a transitory distribution facility on certain real property located at 1920 North Locust Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. First reading.
Move this, suspend the readings, and then can we talk about this just for a second?
Sure. Then suspend all readings in a second. On the motion to suspend.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-1875, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, declaring an emergency.
Move for, move for all readings.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-1876, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plaske County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 2105 White Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Move for adoption.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 1106 East Second? 1106 East Second? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R-18196, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plaske County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second. Anyone here, call a public hearing. Speak on grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1876, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, declaring an emergency. First reading.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1878, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending section 14.26(c) for the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 7697, to extend the time for owners to replace all premises signs declaring an emergency. First reading.
I've got a motion to suspend, and I'll, we'll let.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1878, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending section 14.26(c) for the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 7697, to extend the time for owners to replace all premises signs declaring an emergency. First reading.
I've got a motion to suspend, and I'll, we'll let.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1878, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, declaring an emergency. First reading.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1879, Councilmember Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 124 Eureka Gardens Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R1 zoning classification to planned unit development PUD zoning classifications by amending ordinance number 7697, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, declaring an emergency. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Question?
Question.
What are we doing here?
The property, it's a grocery store that's sitting in the middle of a residential area. The property transferred to a new ownership. Planning suggested that they bring the zoning up to current, which would have been a commercial, and I think something happened on the, with the commercial zoning, so they went back and decided to do it, to make it a PUD. So, that's where we are. Thank you.
You agree with that, Sean?
100%.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
We need a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1880, Councilmember Robinson.
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning an unused portion of a right-of-way located along the River Road Trail in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. First reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
This concludes new business.
Thank you very much. Let's go right into public comment. First is Deanna Robinson.
Hello, everyone. Some people know me from, we used to back. I recently moved back from Houston, Texas, and I'm full of ideas and, you know, ready to go, hit the floor. Okay. What I want to say is that I grew up in North Little Rock, enjoyed my stay here. I learned a lot of valuable lessons. Parents grew up here. My son grew up here. My son is now a recruiter. Anybody needs to be recruited to the University of Arkansas at Fayetteville, he's there available to help you. Okay. So, I have a dream of a great city by the river with fairness for all. I would like to see the repurpose of the Railroad Depot where I grew up about a block away. I remember it, the tail end of it, but I do know some history about it, that it was, you know, a major depot early in 19, I think, '10 or so. But me and Mayor Hayes had that thing going because we both loved the railroad. But I would like to see that we get input from the neighborhood. There's not many people left in the neighborhood, but I myself worked with the Sherman Park CDC, and we were really adamant on getting repurposed. I recently understood that the purpose that was meant for at this time was a daycare or something. That hasn't been, you know.
Right. It didn't, it, well, I mean, it worked for a long time, but the director is retiring this month, as a matter of fact.
Right. And I'm ready to take his position.
Yeah.
And I wanted to see a museum as other railroad enthusiasts want. Because I recently, like I said, moved from Houston. We have a couple places in Houston, like it's up, one in La Porte, Texas, and it's very similar to this one, but it's not as old. And it's like used for educational purposes for the youth. But I think for the city on the whole, it would really make a really good impact with what's all going on. I'm excited about what's going on. I recently retired. I'm not in for volunteer, I'm in for a job, okay? Because when I work, I work hard. So, but I do have a heart for the youth because I think they need the education to know, this is a great city. And what all I see that's going on now is good. It's all good. Like I said, that's the only reason I moved back, because I wanted to make a difference in where I grew up, because I have choices. I recently retired from the Great Airlines, Southwest, get the plug, okay? But I just really want to see this really, you know, impact the city too, because I think a lot of people are interested in the railroad, because the railroad had a very big impact on this city. So, if anyone can, you know, see through, I guess, all whatever the ideas they have, that railroad was worth putting money into years ago to save. I think it's worth putting some money into it again and getting grant money to repurpose it as a museum. And I know it's there, railroad people are interested in doing it also. So, does anybody want to jump on board? I'm ready. We can get on board and get this thing going.
I love your energy, and we'd like, we'd like to hear the ideas. That's a good old building. We'd like to try to save it with a good program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Taylor.
Bobby? I'm sorry. Did I say, did I not say Bobby Taylor?
Yes, you did. Bobby Taylor, give me the stare down.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Bobby Taylor. Mayor went back to court Thursday. The judge asked me how it was, and I said, "It's good today and bad tomorrow." He just shook his head. And he looked at Billy, told him, after I showed him his pictures, and the code showed him their pictures, he said, "You can't do this." I don't know where this is going to, but I'm not fixing to let up on him.
What did the judge say?
Huh?
What did the judge say?
The judge told him, asked him if he had a lawnmower. He said, "Yes." He said, "You have a weed eater?" He said, "Yes." He said, "I suggest you use it." That was basically the end of it, but he said that it may go to a higher court. May go to a higher court.
Okay, well, I'll get briefed on it tomorrow and find out.
And he said he had, he may have to testify me. So, I have a question. How, this has been going on for almost four years. We'll be in December. How long did y'all's dad tell you you couldn't do something before you found out what the penalty was? And you learned different? That's what puzzles me. Why something can't be done for justice? Mayor, I know you're trying, and I appreciate you. If you want to know anything else, you can ask this lady right here. She was there. And I'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, Bobby, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, see me before you leave. Any council members have anything to go to the order? Ms. Ross?
National night out. We've got our flyer here Tuesday, October the 2nd. Check your neighborhoods, or we can name the, you know, if Caitlin wanted to read these off real quick of all the different events going on, but.
Have you got them? Go ahead.
Yeah. We'll let Caitlin. She has a much better reading voice, yes.
Here, I got them. Ward 1, Military Heights Outreaches Association, 3 to 6. Holt Neighborhood, this is on the 2nd. 4:30 to 6:30 at 18th and Share. Levy Business Association at Levy Baptist Church, 5:30 till 8. Park Hill Neighborhood Association at Idlewild Park, that's always a good one, 6 to 7:30. Military, I mean, these are all a lot of fun. Ward 2, Sherman Park Neighborhood Association, 7th Street Elementary School, 4 to 8. Metta Park Neighborhood Association, 5 to 7. Rose City Neighborhood Association, 5 to 7. Metta Park's at the elementary school. Rose City's at School Street Neighborhood Park. Dixie Edition is 5 to 9, is 900 block of North H. St. Augustine Catholic Church, 6 to 8 at 1421 East 2nd. Glenview Neighborhood Association, 6 to 8:30. And that is going to be Glenview Boulevard. That's always a lot of fun. Faulkner Crossing Property Owner Association, 6 to 8 at the Stone Links Clubhouse. Ward 3, Amboy Neighborhood Association at the Amboy Methodist Church, 6 to 7:30. Levy Baptist Business Association, 5:30 to 8 at the Levy Baptist Church. And Saturday, October the 6th, Melrose Community Outreach at Melrose Park. So, try to get involved in your community. We'd certainly appreciate that. I have one special announcement. Let everybody know just how important some of our council members are, but Steve Baxter Wednesday is going to be promoted to Chief Master Sergeant, and that is one big dog. I'm telling you, that's who runs the Air Force. It's not the generals, it's the master sergeant. So, congratulations, council member. Absolutely. We're really proud of the job you do protecting our country. I sleep better at night knowing that you're doing that. So, anybody else? How about a motion?
Mayor, will you make a reminder that the November 12th meeting will be held on the 13th due to veterans?
Yeah, I guess we kind of need a voice vote on that. The, November the 11th, November the 12th is Veterans Day, and that's a Monday, and the city is off that day, so it's okay with me to move it to the 13th if that's okay with everybody else. Anybody, any opposition? Ms. Ross?
Everybody will be back from National League of Cities, the ones that are going. I mean, it's, I mean, it's that following week, but I, okay, make sure everybody's back.
Okay. Consider it done. We had no opposition. Okay, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O-1878, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending section 14.26(c) for the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 7697, to extend the time for owners to replace all premises signs declaring an emergency. First reading.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.